Okay. Uh. We will not be taking any breaks. If you need to use the restroom, please feel free to use it at your leisure. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate. I'd like to say thank you to the valet clerks, Soviet Peas and Allison LaJulia. And the counters, Soviet Peas and Mary Anderson supervised by Mary Lou. Uh, thank you for, uh, to Deputy Moderator Yvonne Doherty as well. Before we get started, if you could, please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and all. Please stay standing. I'd like to also ask that we take a moment of silence for those who we've lost this year. Dispatch to. Thank you. All right. The winners of the election held last night, select man assassinated overseer of the four, three-year term, Eric Dergan with ninety votes and Kenneth, Kenneth Harmon had twenty-four votes. School Board Director MSAD fifty-five, three-year term, Danielle Riggeman, Riggeman, sixteen votes. And School Board Director MSAD fifty-five, one-year term, Allison LaJulia at, with eighteen votes. There's no objection. I'll be using the main moderator's manual as a guide in supervising the conduct of this meeting. If there's no objection, we would use a show of hands or your, um, yellow card, sorry. As a method of voting unless otherwise required. As we proceed through the Articles of the Warren, I'll read the article aloud as well as any recommendations and then ask if someone will motion on the article. Once a motion has been made, I'll ask for a second. At that time, the article will be over for discussion. In order to ensure that everyone can hear and keep the process running smoothly during discussion, please wait to be recognized to speak and wait for a microphone. If possible, please stand to speak. Identify yourself by name and then speak to the article at hand. In any manner will you advance this speaker, please. Thank you. Um, please focus on the article at hand, asking questions to clarify or stating your position and why. With regards to amendments, if you wish to propose an amendment to an article, then you may do so. The motion to amend does require a second. Upon receiving the second, the amendment is open to discussion. And then upon the amendment being moved, the amendment may be voted upon. When it has been determined that there has been equal opportunity for those who wish to speak to do so, I'll ask for the vote. At any point I have not done so, but the group is ready to vote on the article, any person may move the question. Do we have any non-residents that wish to speak at today's meeting? Yes.
A question about that. Why doesn't your, our non-resident, a taxidermist, do they still have a right to vote, um, and speak without the unification? Asking if they have a right to the rest of the non-people that are prepared to agree?
That's not the way the statutes are written, Carrie.
Because I haven't seen that. Like he asked, I can't hear the answer to that.
Uh, it's a personal, I don't have that.
I mean, it should not be denied in case you speak if they're prepared to agree.
We've never denied anyone the chance to speak if we're not prepared.
It's because if they just haven't been approved, that's why we have to begin a meeting allowing non-residents to speak.
I understand that. But I would like to know, if, how do people know if they don't want to listen to you? He should still have a right to vote if he's a taxidermist.
He can't vote regardless.
I understand that. But he has a right to speak even if he's a taxidermist.
Carrie, and then trying to flush yours, I've done enough. I've never known anyone to be not given the opportunity to speak. So I think you're speaking on a hypothetical thing and it's all valid.
That, that's what I was going to say. But I only made three out of ten and everybody understood what it is. And I just want to know if I would have a right if they said, no, you can't power.
That would be up to their determination. I can't make a determination.
Well, I'm not a duty moderator. We should know if it's in his fault.
I don't know enough to research it. I don't know.
There was something about, I'm not going to vote, but Jean, can you come up with anything?
Okay, we'll look at that. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Oh, for you to.
Yeah.
Uh, can we have a, a movement for Terry to be able to speak if she would like to?
Are they voting in any non-residents to speak at the meeting if you're allowed to speak?
All those in favor.
I'm sorry. All those in favor. Now it's moved. I'm doing this, by the way. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask the group to collectively vote. I'm just gonna. All right. Article three. To see if the town will vote to appropriate six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, which is the snowmobile reimbursement received from the state. One half of the amount to be given to the Saukby Snow Drifters Club and the other half to be given to the Hiram Cotton Hill Climbers. The money to be used for various purposes such as trail maintenance, construction and purchases, or purchases of equipment and material. These trials can be opened to the public during the winter season. Municipal officers recommend appropriating the snowmobile reimbursement from the state. All in favor? Okay. Article four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Saukby Rescue Unit. Per their request as follows. Saukby Rescue Operating Account, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Saukby Rescue Reserve Account, five thousand dollars. Totalling thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Municipal officers recommend raising appropriate thirty-two thousand five hundred for operations and two thousand five hundred dollars for reserve for SRU. Do I have a vote? All in, all in favor? Any discussions, Terry? Yes?
Have they just, uh, go into the office and grab a vacation with twenty-five hundred? Have they just do it?
There's not that much.
No, do, uh, yeah, three thousand.
Sir, you have a second? Move to the second. Any discussions?
Where do you need, what do you need for the Saukby Rescue Unit to put a talk vote?
I, uh, you have a question?
Yeah, in fact, I vote, you're talking about getting another rescue unit.
Right, they're working on that.
And you just mentioned on the paper or what do you do originally?
We're looking for grants. We're looking for a rescue thing. Right now, they're in the process of building the vehicles, but we know how much we're gonna need. And when you apply for a grant, you have to be able to tell them what it is you're going to talk.
But what's the other, you, you, you buy some footage or you go to ask the town for it?
I don't understand your question.
Is it granted, imagined?
Not necessarily.
So you haven't seen no money before, right?
I still don't understand your question.
I don't want to pay for another rescue unit. I'm asking you why the rescue unit will do, to raise money for this rescue unit you want.
And like I said, it wasn't even grant money. Because you can apply to get grants and sometimes you can get, like, we got a check from Stephen King for twenty-five thousand, okay, with no other partner. But in order to do things like that, you have to know what it is you're going to get. You can't write and say, oh, we want an ambulance, give us money. You have to tell them exactly what it is you're getting and how much it's going to cost. So they're in the process now of building the vehicle so that we can write them things, so we can ask different grants for money so we can tell them exactly what we want.
When anybody's speaking, please remove the mask and speak as loud as you can because we have the, um, laptop over in the other room. And through TV two, they can not hear you at home. I couldn't hear you at all, uh, period. So if possible, please speak up without the mask and we'll use the microphone.
Okay, this gentleman had a question. And questions should be directed to the moderator. I'll, I'll redirect. Yes.
Listen, didn't we start years ago, where we see money just for, about, you know, to put away every year? But I thought all the other towns were doing the same thing. So I mean, should be.
Quite a bit of money in there for the rescue to buy you. We were putting money in for a ambulance every year.
That's just a capital fund. It's for capital expenses.
Isn't that what a rescue is?
A rescue is a capital expense, but there are other capital expenses, but the rescue is primarily what that's for.
So there sh- there should be a substantial amount of money in there now already?
Uh, there is between the four towns. It should be four times what you guys have, what I have, which is like thirty-three thousand. But a rescue is going to cost about two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, maybe even two seventy-five.
And.
So we still have to come up with grant money. But until we figure out exactly what we want, we can't write a grant. Because like I said, you write a grant saying we want a rescue and you don't tell them what you want, they're not going to consider it.
But I, I understand that. But al- also I know the years passed, when we bought a new rescue, we paid extra money. So that the body off one can be put onto a new truck, because the truck's was getting worn out. So it would be cheaper than if I remember right, when it came around to buy a new rescue, we didn't do that. We still went and bought another one.
Well, I, I'm not part of the crew that's doing the, the build. They have a team on the rescue that's doing the build for the rescue people. And then they'll bring the recommendation to the board and the board will decide, or with them, with their input, as to what would best work and what would be the best option. And that has not been decided yet. I do know that during conversations with the board, there has been discussions about moving the box. That was one discussion. Nothing has been settled.
Um, if you could just pass it on, who would have the idea?
That if we're going to pay the extra money, which I think at, at the time, it was twenty-five thousand dollars extra to have the box that could be removed and put onto a new truck. And then we didn't do it. I would suggest that we do that now and that would save twenty-five thousand dollars a year anyway. If you could pass that on.
Okay, I'll pass that on, but I do not know exactly, because I haven't seen what the recommendations, okay?
So to address a couple of items, the reserve funding can be found on page sixty-six in your town report. And the question about the truck, I believe the last ambulance that they purchased was set up for the box. So that would probably not be the ambulance that they were replacing. They're probably replacing number, I would call it ambulance number two, which would be the older one in the unit, which I do not believe was purchased that with the box setup. That's my recollection of the last few town meetings.
Okay, um, one second, please. All right, uh, I'm. My, my information from someone who's on, he's on the build team, is that they're trying to get a four-wheel drive because you can't get around here without it. And we're replacing rescue two and that does not have a box that can be removed. Rescue one does, but not rescue two. Okay? So does that answer your question?
Yes.
And I will pass on the, and I will pass on your concerns.
To buy a, a truck that can hold more, change it over than it is to buy a whole rescue.
Right, but right now, the one we're replacing, you can't do that with.
That's what we're looking at down the road because rescue two, uh, basically a cube chassis. But the way we want to go with it, we want to go with a truck chassis with four-wheel drive. So down the road, we can take and replace box instead of the whole truck.
Okay, all those in favor are voting on the amendment? All right. Articles amended. Now voting on the article as amended. All in favor? The article five. See if the town will vote to appropriate the franchise fees and any other grants received from Spectrum Incorporated, formerly Time Warner Incorporated. Minus the internet costs for the town. To Saukby Valley Media Tech, the Saukby TV program does not run during the twenty-twenty, oh, sorry. To Saukby Valley Media Tech, Saukby TV, formerly TV two, for the purch- purchase and maintenance of equipment and for operating costs. The Saukby TV program does not run during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Due to the absence of a Saukby TV coordinator, the franchise fees will be held in the Saukby Valley Media Tech account by the school until February twenty-twenty-two. If no coordinator is found by then and the program is not running, the fees will be returned to the towns. This should be on page forty-four of the report. About thirty seconds. Uh, last year, it was seventy-two, seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-six cents received. Paid TV two five thousand four hundred and seventy-five thirty. Go along. Any discussions? Yes, sir. Did you have a question? All in favor? Article six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars with one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars coming from surplus for Harvest Hills Animal Shelter. Following outside agencies per their requests. Saukby Rec- Recreation Council, three thousand dollars. Southwest Oxford County Nutrition Incorporated, four thousand six hundred dollars. Seniors Plus Organization, one thousand dollars. Community Concepts Incorporated, two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Smooth Feather Youth and Excursions, six hundred dollars. Saco River Corridor Commission, three hundred dollars. Saukby Snow Drifters Club, five hundred dollars. Soldiers Memorial Library, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Harvest Hills Animal Shelter, one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Hiram Historical Society, five hundred dollars. Hiram Development Association, five hundred dollars. Hiram Community Center, five hundred dollars. Municipal officers recommend raising appropriate thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars with one thousand six hundred and twenty coming from surplus. It's on pages thirty-four, forty-five through forty-eight and fifty-one. Last year was thirty-four thousand three hundred dollars. Any discussions? Yes. Please wait for the mic. Thank you.
Just for curiosity's sake, I see now we're raising five hundred more for the snowdrifters, Saukby Snow Drifters. Where in the past, all the, uh, snowmobile clubs have gotten is the money from registrations? Is, this is the first year that that's been done? The second? Okay. My bad, Dan. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, I can say, would like to follow you. Thank you. Um, uh, the Southwest Oxford Community Nutrition is forty-six hundred dollars. They can get three meals for a dollar. So this is fifteen thousand meals and on the last three years, we've been, uh, they've been putting out eighteen hundred meals for higher residents. I don't think we need to give them fifteen thousand meals worth of money. Uh, when we have trouble with people right here in our own town that are coming. So I'd like to, uh, lower this, amend this to twenty-five hundred, which is seventy-five hundred meals, which is more than enough to cover the higher end people and then go on. And as Jean said, the Saukby Snow Drifters Club, they haven't done, I haven't seen them do anything to raise their own money being a club. Rafts, uh, poker rallies, fishing derbies. Raffles, poker rallies, fishing derbies. I believe Sacb Snow Drifters ought to be asked to either raise their own money or ask the town for a sniping from the snow machine registration. Have an add-on, five dollars a machine, which would give them four hundred and fifty more for trail maintenance. That's the amendment I would like to make.
So what people told me about that? I think there's a problem with it. I don't think that we can add fees just not to blow right.
No, that's just a suggestion. They do define more money.
Right. I don't think that that's legal for them. We account, not that additional fee.
We can't say it's five dollar use of our trails?
No. No, we can't accept that fee. And let me just answer one other question. I will be full disclosure. My son is a member of Sacb Snow Drifters. They have done some fundraising. It has been held on social media. So unfortunately, you would be unaware of that because of advertising costs. Social media is free, whereas print ads are more expensive. They were successful in raising some funds. And there has been a lot of work under the trails. ATVs unfortunately get onto the trails and ruin them. They had to replace several bridges this year. And they, you know, they encompass a lot more than just the trails in Hiram. They had to reroute the whole trail that goes through the new Amish property. They had to redo that whole trail this year.
I understand what they have to do. But I don't believe for ninety, I believe it's ninety sleds registered in Hiram, this is a lot more putting on everyone else for just a few to use. That's why I'm asking to eliminate this and let them fundraise. I was with the Keys of Falls Fishing Union Club. When we started, we had forty-three dollars. We ended up, when it sort of dissolved, with sixteen hundred just for having two raffles a year. They can do the same thing. Thank you.
But you're, I'm sorry. Your amendment is to...
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred to a food pantry and take away five hundred completely.
The general rule is so.
We have an amendment.
The discussion's still open?
Yes.
It's still second, yes?
We have the second.
I'm not in the second. We're going to the second. We haven't been started yet?
We have.
I questioned, if I may say so, I questioned three meals for a dollar.
I don't think anybody can get three meals for a dollar unless you're a franchise, like one of the hot food places that is doing a promotion. Those guys work very hard up there. And yes, it's forty-six hundred dollars. But cutting it more than a half is just ridiculous, you know? They serve a lot of people. And who knows what's gonna happen over the next year?
Allison, Allison, right in front of you.
Hold on. You got to give me a chance.
Okay, on TV, where they get most of their food advertised as it's three meals for a dollar is what they can get. And I have no problem paying for Hiram's people. But when I just go by, there's Nahansha, there's other towns. I'm just saying, help the people that are having trouble paying taxes in our own town. We don't have to keep giving money away. You think this is a bottomless pit of our money? I'm just saying, help the taxpayers a little this year. We've had just as bad a year as everyone else.
Good morning. Ellie Stein from Words Hill. I'd like to speak to the objection to funding Southwest Oxford County Nutrition. It seemed, I don't know a great deal about the organization, but I know that you can't just say, you know, food is, the cost is food and food doesn't cost that much and therefore we should be able to cut this. It takes an infrastructure to deliver food to people who are food insecure, who are kids who are hungry, families who don't have enough during a hard time. And I'm gonna make the assumption that people are responsible and good-hearted who run these organizations, having been a part of organizations in the past where we were serving underserved people and people who are truly in need. So I hope that we will fully fund this and turn down the amendment that has been made to cut these services. Thank you.
Sorry, Allison.
Oh, sorry.
So I totally agree with that lady's comments. And I totally disagree with Mr. Perry's proposed amendment. I think as a town, we ought to show some compassion to the people that are around us. And, you know, it's more blessed to give than to receive. That's what I still meant.
Any further discussions on this amendment? So we have an amendment to Article Six to reduce it to thirty-one thousand dollars. Do I have a second? Oh, all in favor? Sorry.
All opposed.
All opposed? Amendment fails? So we move on. Move the pardon? Are you required? So you, oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a second? Yeah. All, all in favor?
This will be thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars for the F.
All opposed? All right, it's moved. Article Seven. To act on the reports of the municipal officers, assessors, and overseers of the four, treasurer, tax collector, town clerk, and other town officers. Any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Article E. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to spend an amount not to exceed three-twelves of the budget, budgeted amount, in each budget category of the 2021 annual budget during the period from January first, 2022, to March 2022 annual town meeting. This article legalizes municipal expenditures made after the fiscal year ends but before the annual town meeting. Do I move it? Any discussions? All, all in favor? Opposed? Moved? Article Nine. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers on behalf of the town to dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon in terms as they may deem advisable but pursuant to a written policy adopted by them and to execute quick claim deeds for such real estate and further allow the municipal officers to authorize the treasurer to waive automatic foreclosures when it is in the best interest of the town. Second. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, it's missing, right? It's not in, it's not in the report. It got left out.
So the article, the article will be missed in number. Your, we caught it after it went to the printer. What you have printed is just a missed number. It skipped over a bunch of numbers. So now you're gonna point it to be like on Article Ten and your book will probably say Article eleven. Or like that. Does that make sense?
This got missed in number. Nothing's missing.
Oh, it's not missing. Article Nine is moved. Article Ten.
So from here on out, we're giving off one number. So if he's gonna say Article Ten, your book's gonna say Article eleven. Because if you look, there is no number nine in your book.
Article Ten, you can go ahead and vote and work it back.
No. But that's not the way that article is on the way to the bottom of the post.
Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to thirty-six MRSA subsection five oh six and to set that rate of interest at two percent that the town will vote to pay thereon and appropriate said amount from the overlay account. Municipal officers recommend to pay two percent on any prepaid taxes. Last year was two percent. Would you move it? Any discussions? Yes, sir. Wait for the microphone, please.
I'd like to know, do we have a place that they can actually get two percent or is the town coughing up the two percent?
About having to cut the ball of the GBR, if it was right now, I think it's more than anything else. But small percentage of that there.
Then why don't we lower it to what we can get in an account for versus coming out of our pockets? You guys understand it's a hundred and ten people in the back of this having trouble paying their taxes. We can't just keep giving money away.
Any further discussion?
I'm pretty sure not all of the hundred and ten are having trouble paying their taxes. Just saying.
Right beside you there, Allison.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the reason this two percent is given has been incentive for people who can pay to put the money upfront so that the town doesn't have to borrow money. If you have your money upfront, if any of you know, it's easy to buy something. Yes, there are people having trouble paying, but they're still not asked to pay anymore. They're paying the same amount as what everybody else is.
I'm gonna say they are having trouble 'cause who would pay seven percent more than they have to? That's what I'm saying.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Article Lemon. Who's the one I just, that was open. To see if the town will vote to change six percent of interest on unpaid taxes. Did I say? I'm sorry. Charge six percent of interest on unpaid taxes and set the date for interest to commence at sixty days after the 2021 commitment date. Municipal officers recommend sixty days after the 2021 commitment date and interest rate of six percent. Last year was eight percent. Eight percent? Any discussion?
I'm gonna amend this to go back to what we were last year because we had people concerned that you can find better interest rates to make investments versus paying your taxes. There's no need to drop it because we had people concerned with that. If you have the interest too low, they'd rather make money on their, whatever they put money in, stocks or whatever, versus paying their taxes. So I'm gonna say, leave it the way it was and they'll think of us first. They did lower it this year. I didn't understand it. I thought it was something you guys. No. Then let it, I withdraw my amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So move it. Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to set the interest rate of two percent to be paid by the town on abated taxes pursuant to thirty-six MRSA section five oh six A and authorize the municipal officers to appropriate from the 2021 overlay abated taxes to any property owner that have paid their taxes prior to approval of the payment. Municipal officers recommend two percent for 2021. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article Thirteen. See if the town will accept, will vote to accept any and all types of gifts, trusts, trusts, grant funds, and/or income generated from town-owned properties, i.e. logging, that are in the best interest of the town. The town to disperse interest earned on any trust in accordance with provisions therein. Any income generated on town-owned municipal property to be put into the Park Upkeep account. Municipal officers recommend to do so. Any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Article Fourteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to accept any and all interest earned on checking account, reserve accounts, money market accounts, and saving accounts and disperse said interest on notes to the banks and apply a portion of the current year taxes. Motion made? Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article Fifteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to dispose of any town-owned personal property that they deem necessary and place the funds received from the sale into a specified account, such as sale of a fire truck. and place the funds received from the sale into a specified account such as sale of a fire truck. Funds would be placed into the vehicle purchasing reserve account, et cetera. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to make final determinations regarding the closing or opening of roads to winter maintenance pursuant to twenty-three MRSA subsection twenty-nine fifty-three. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to accept and appropriate all building permit fees and seventy-five percent of the plumbing permit fees collected by the building and plumbing inspector. The remaining twenty-five percent of the plumbing permit fees to be sent to the state treasurer. Municipal officers recommend to do so. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article eighteen, this is a new article. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to appropriate a portion of the recreational land reserve funds for the purpose of creating parking areas for Stanley and Little Clemens Ponds and to use on any other recreational land needs. Do I second? Any discussions? Yes.
The segment hasn't put any number in here. So I'd like to make an amendment and remove a portion and put twenty-five percent.
So the article says to see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to appropriate a portion of the recreational land reserve funds. And to clarify, you're saying to appropriate twenty-five percent of the recreational land reserve.
California.
Seven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-five minutes.
That would be the maximum, then it's worth a parking lot.
Well, two parking lots.
They haven't even gone out and bid yet.
No, they haven't, they've gone out and bid for that yet.
This is why I didn't like the whole thing.
So this was based on a class from people who used the little funds on a healthy entry there during the winter. Having little dangerous around the park, parking the rest of the park. So the landlord has agreed, I think, and that he's donating a small portion of land to allow construction of a parking area right where the snowmobile field was brought. The other area down by Stanley, we're negotiating with the landlord to do the same thing on the opposite side of the road where the current parking area is to provide more parking and make that path safer during the winter. You know, it's a revenue that we get. In summer, Stanley is certainly the issue.
I understand, Little Clemens, people talking, yes, we have to get them, we have to get these cars off the road. And I do know on Stanley Park how that one works. But if, if you think somebody's going to donate their land because it's a traffic jam, there shouldn't, there's going to be a cost of that money, the cost of buying that before you even put a parking lot in.
The landlord takes one of the little funds, he's already said he's going to donate the land. I don't know about me, I don't yet.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking, seventy-five hundred dollars, you're not going to buy, you're not even going to be able to pay anybody for a piece of land.
So I'll be willing to argue for the second floor, we'll try and work with those constraints. If we can't take the work, then we just won't be able to do it.
Okay, I'm just saying, as townspeople, as the town taxpayer, I don't expect anybody to be giving us land. That's not the way it works, not today, sorry. I think we're going to be putting money in this recreational land reserve fund every year. So that's why I started out with twenty-five percent. I don't want it all paid for all at once because you haven't made all your design, decisions yet. And plus, Apple Lakers puts on a pretty good show every fall. And we make them only have packing on one side of the road. Until we get enough funds, I mean, so we don't have to do it all at once. Get enough funds, we'll put packing on one side of the road and not on the other until we get enough so we can cover the bill. I'm not saying clean out the reserve fund account. Because I thought this was made for the pack we bought up on Huron Hill. And I'd like to keep a lot of that money still for that pack.
Any other discussions on the amendment? Yes.
Thank you, I was just wondering if there's a safety concern or if anyone has a context for the budget item. Is there a fire truck issue or is there, have there been accidents? Is this anticipating accidents? We live on Nacho and we haven't noticed a problem, but that doesn't mean there isn't one. I just wanted some more information.
I can speak for the one on Clemens Cove, we plow. My husband Greg Sawyer plows. It's very hard to get a plow through there on these snowy days where the guys are out doing their fishing and whatnot. So that's a problem. And then sometimes you can barely get a car through.
Any other discussions on the amendment? Do I have a, do we have a second? We did. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed to the amendment? Fair amendment? So back to the original article. To appropriate a portion of the recreational land, recreational land reserve funds. Any discussions?
Before we go forward with this, I'd like to know how much money you're going to spend. I don't want you to empty this name accounting. This is wrong, giving the selectmen a free ride to our checkpoint.
So I'll stick to that. I don't think that anybody on this board right now is planning on emptying that account. We appreciate what we all put that money away for. And that includes not just Mount Cotler Park, but all the parks. Including the Sawmill Park and Pay Lake Watchword, all of them. So it's part, it's going to be, because it's not a public road. So in essence, it becomes part of our park systems. So we won't spend more money than is necessary. And if the money comes in too high, we just won't do it. This is my tax money too. I'm not going to spend, you know, thirty thousand dollars on a parking lot to put gravel parking lot in.
So do we want, do we want to move the question? All in favor? All in favor of Article eighteen as written? All opposed? So move, pass. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal officers to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur during calendar year twenty twenty-one. Funds to be taken from the surplus account. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars from the surplus. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars for the following town office operations and professional services. Audit, seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Planning and appeals boards, two hundred dollars. Legal expenses, five thousand dollars. MMA dues, two thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. SMPD dues, six zero, six hundred and eight dollars. Town office operations, forty thousand dollars. Updating tax maps, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Health officer, eight hundred dollars. Totally fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Note, the five thousand dollar increase in town office operations is because the computer equipment and software account has been combined into this account. Motion? Any discussions?
In the past, we've had times that we didn't have to have the batch we done. Have we done enough to do it this year, Terry?
Yeah, we have some splits, but we really need that.
Okay, very good, listen.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars from the building reserve account for upkeep and repairs to any town owned properties. Municipal officers recommend appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars from the building reserve account.
Thank you.
Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for code enforcement officer, building instructor, and plumbing inspectors combined salary, mileage, training courses, and any other miscellaneous materials or supplies needed. Nineteen thousand two hundred dollars will be taken from surplus account. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars for CEO salary and expenses. Nineteen thousand two hundred dollars will be taken from surplus account. Any discussions? Yes, sir.
Where is the surplus account in the book and how much is in it?
It's in page thirty-five.
All of them? I think I could try exploiting this one, take the article, where that money will come from. So this last year, we saw a significant increase in building permits. We bring that money in for the building permits, we don't have your authority to spend that money. So that money goes into the general funds and lapses into what we call surplus at the end of the year. So this article is an attempt to foresee what might happen in the future and be able to properly compensate our code officer based on how much work actually comes in the door. So for example, this last year, I think his average was twelve and a half hours a week. He brought in twenty thousand dollars in permits, which is, it was significantly more than has been in the past. The, the previous year was twelve, two thousand eighteen was eighty-eight hundred dollars. So we have historically been running a deficit in that department. But this may continue, this building trend may continue. And so what if he has to work thirty hours a week and we still only going to pay him twelve thousand dollars? So the board thought about it and we came up with a method to compensate him appropriately for the actual number of hours he puts in. Whereby we would pay him a stipend up to what he has been getting. But if he's over eleven and a half hours, I think it was per week, then he would be paid the going rate, which is the average right now is twenty, nineteen or twenty an hour. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. So let's say he works thirty hours a week and that's where we wanted to cap it. It would come out to that amount of money that we've asked for this article.
I just wanted to further explain that we're not raising money. It's only taking the income that he's generating from building permits and applying it to his salary. So it isn't increasing it, but we can't take income and put it into the salary account. This authorizes us to offset the income with his salary.
So he will work thirty hours a week unless the work is there. And if the work is there, the income is being generated from the work that you do upon your. We're not really asking to increase it and we probably won't spend that much on the salary this year. We just want to be able to, if we have to.
Any more discussion?
So this total amount is, this is just max, he's not going to get it if you don't put the hours in.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for compensations, insurance, benefits for town employees. Authorizing and entrusting the elected municipal officers to disperse funds appropriately in accordance with the higher personal policy and appointments to permit two positions. Municipal officers recommend one, one hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for compensation, insurances, and benefits for town office staff, eighty-two thousand dollars. Fire chiefs, five thousand dollars. Municipal officers, fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Election clerks, two thousand dollars. Animal control officer, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. EMA director, one thousand eight hundred dollars. Unemployment, one thousand dollars. Insurances, seventy thousand dollars. Towns share social security, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion? Yes.
Last year, we came up with a, uh, the employees had to pay a percentage. Uh, what was the number we came up with?
Fifty percent.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for the update assessing for the 2021 tax commitment. This is a written contract with a single assessor. Any unexpended funds at year-end will be put into the revaluation reserve account. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate five thousand dollars with unexpended funds going into the revaluation reserve account. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars for the following emergency response departments. Any unexpended balance at year's end will be put into the special revenue accounts for each department. Communications, ten thousand dollars. Iron Room Fire Department, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. South Iron Room Fire Department, eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Totalling forty-seven thousand dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate forty-seven thousand dollars for emergency response departments, with unexpended balances going into a special revenue account for each department. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to appropriate up to two thousand dollars from the building improvement reserve account for the purpose of purchasing a commercial-sized compressor and transfer switch for the South Iron Room Fire Department. Municipal officers recommend to appropriate up to two thousand dollars from the building improvement reserve account for said purpose. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, wasn't there something in that they, on quarter share of one of Kisa Falls?
That's a different compressor. The compressor we own on quarter share with the Kisa Falls Fire Department is for filling air pack bottles. This is a standard air compressor.
Okay.
Most of your newer vehicles have air brakes, and you need to keep them charged. Or you're sitting there waiting five, ten minutes for the thing to build up pressure before you can go out the door.
Yeah, I just didn't know what that quarter share was.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars for the purpose of paying a stipend to volunteer firefighters in both the fire, both fire departments in accordance with criteria approved by the fire chiefs and municipal officers. Any discussions?
Is this four thousand per department, so eight thousand total? I think the motion to double that, then, four thousand to each department. You spread that four thousand on fifteen people. It doesn't add up very well.
Yeah, we, we can't increase an article.
Well, I think everybody on the fire department would prefer that. I mean, four thousand dollars, whatever, I mean, fifteen volunteers is not a lot of money. I would agree with that, James, very much so. It is, it is more, but I still don't feel personally it's enough. So that's, I mean, in my own opinion, that's something that we need to look into, at least doubling out a minimum.
No, that's, that's what we just said. You can't, you can't raise.
Yeah, I got that earlier, but just saying, it's not enough. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars for town utilities as follows. Hydrants, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Streetlights, ten thousand dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars for hydrants and streetlights. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article twenty-nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand eight hundred dollars, which includes reimbursement from the state for the general assistance account. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate six thousand eight hundred dollars, which includes reimbursements. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article thirty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and five thousand dollars for the following solid waste accounts. Solid waste account, nine, ninety thousand dollars. Tri-town waste reserve, fifteen thousand dollars, totaling one hundred and five thousand dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate one hundred and five thousand dollars for solid waste accounts. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article thirty-one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for the purpose of roadwork within the town as follows. Large road projects, twenty-five thousand dollars. General road maintenance, one hundred thousand dollars. Paving, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Window roads, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for road work within the town. Any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Pass. Article thirty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand two hundred dollars for the care of cemeteries, memorial purposes, park upkeep, and the restoration and maintenance of outlying cemeteries where veterans are buried, per MRSA nineteen sixty-four, chapter fifty-eight, section three. Any unexpended balance at year-end in the outlying cemetery account will be put into a special revenue account, and the balance in the park upkeep account will be put into the recreational land reserve account. Accounts to be as follows. Outlying cemeteries, two thousand dollars. Care of cemeteries. Pleasant Ridge Cemetery, one thousand dollars. Stanley Cemetery, thir, uh, three thousand dollars. Terror Cemetery, one hundred dollars. Iron Village Cemetery, one thousand seven hundred dollars. Memorial purposes, four hundred dollars. Park upkeep, two thousand dollars. Totalling ten thousand two hundred dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate ten thousand two hundred dollars. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Article thirty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the following reserve accounts. Capital improvement reserve, five thousand dollars. Road construction reserve, ten thousand dollars. Public works reserve, ten thousand dollars. Building maintenance reserve, five thousand dollars. Vehicle purchasing reserve, five thousand dollars. Revaluation reserve, three thousand five hundred dollars. Totalling thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Municipal officers recommend raise and appropriate thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for reserves. Any discussions? Yes, sir.
Just a quick one. I, it, it comes up every year, it's raising the ten thousand for public works, which we don't have public works. Um, I, my feeling on it is, if we wanna raise the money for that, why don't we put fifteen thousand in the vehicle purchasing account and not raise it into public works, which we don't have? It just clarifies, because it's just a little bummer in my saddle every year, I guess, I'm sorry. While a robust public works department was indeed turned down by the town through referendum vote a number of years ago, the town does indeed have a public works department, and has had one for many years. You pay and have paid your road commissioner, his road help, all as public employees of the town. If that's not a road commissioner, uh, uh, public works, I don't know what is. And as far as equipment purchases, the town has used that fund to help save money to buy things such as tobacco that the road commissioner now uses, which saved us eighteen thousand five hundred dollars rental fee a year. It's already paid for itself. The F four fifty, which he's using, which has saved us money. And last year, we were authorized to buy his wheeled excavator. We have yet to purchase that wheeled excavator. But that will help alleviate the tedious, I'm not, I'm an operator of equipment, but I understand that a wheeled excavator will ditch much better than a backhoe. For those of you that are equipment operators, if you can explain it better, if you think you like. But we have a public works department. We just don't spend three-quarters of a million dollars a year on our public works, because we have, what some people had pushed for was including winter maintenance under public works. Trying to bite off all that at once was a lot of money. Message was sent clear, that people did not wanna bond for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy equipment all at once. So we did start buying equipment with the authority of the people a little bit at the time. That's public works.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Pass. Article thirty-four.
Do we?
We need to vote to pass over this article, but we don't need it. No, I don't need it.
I make a most attractive article, because it does have the very order of fact.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor? There are any discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor? Opposed? I think we need amendment to this one. Article thirty-five. Motion to adjourn. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed?
Does anybody like, would you like that?
No.
If you would, can you put the difference from a year to prior? Like, the increase amount, the difference, so many data. You know, it's been a period, and last year, we increased it, or...
That's what these people do, the spreadsheet.
Uh, I didn't have that.
Oh, and that's what I'm sorry.
It may be easier in book, wouldn't it, other than having a spreadsheet? It's like, if you're...
We can't put that if all that are breaking in the warrant.
You can't put in parentheses what the whole article changes.
Oh, I think that's a little more...
So like, with your sal, with the town's hours and stuff, insurance and stuff. A hundred and ninety-two five this year, a hundred and eighty-five. In parentheses, that's it. Couldn't you? I mean, it just makes it a lot easier than having spreadsheets, but then you can, you can see the difference. You don't have to do it every article, I just think on the entire article, what the difference was.
Would be really good.
Increase would be good.
Yeah. As a whole, I think the great way is, uh, save us a good three hours. Minus fare.